Come back.
Okay. It is 6:30 PM, March 18th, 2003. We will call the meeting to order for the workshop. We do have a quorum. One member is absent. Councilman Strather is absent.
He will not be here.
He will not be here. Okay, the first item on our workshop is economic outlook presentation. And Michael is...
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I should have looked at that before I called it.
While he's getting set up, let me just explain to you the purpose for which we're having this presentation. We felt like it would be very appropriate at this time of the year, of the fiscal year, to present to you an economic outlook for the upcoming budget season. Just some golly gee whiz things that are unique to our community. And, you know, it kind of paints the picture for where we're headed in this next budget cycle. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael, and I thought Kristen.
She felt ill today, so I'm going to take it over.
That's right.
That'll be done.
Mayor, Town Council, as Mike said, this was kind of an idea of mine a couple of years ago. This is something that we talked about in graduate school about when you prepare for a budget season. Just to kind of give council an overview of economic conditions that we're facing right now. And I think you're going to see that Trophy Club is pretty unique in what we're experiencing with regards to the economy. I think you're going to see that Texas is in a good position. Dallas-Fort Worth is in a good condition, but Trophy Club's in a really good condition. I think you're about to see that. So let me go ahead and start. As you know, in late 2008, we began a nationwide economic crisis. Texas was a little late to the party, but we experienced it as well. We do know that DFW began to show signs of recovery from the economic crisis in 2010. And it still continues to recover during 2011, 2012. We do know, however, recent reports show that the recovery slowed just a little bit there at the end of 2012. So we're doing good, but it's a slow comeback. Let me go over a little bit about some of the indicators in the national economy. The unemployment rate nationally still remains above what the average was. We have seen, however, growth in retail sales nationally, an increase in building permits nationally, construction. And that has a lot to do with the low interest rates for housing, mortgages, things like that. So obviously, the federal government's trying to do their best to spur the economy on, and it does have an effect. Here in this chart, you'll see this is a national building permit trend for you to look at. You can see in the late 90s and in the early 2000s, a sharp increase in construction. You know, it's funny, in 2008, I actually happened to be at a GFAT conference here in Dallas, right when the crisis hit. And we had an economist come and speak to us about why what was happening was happening. And a lot of what was happening had to do with adjustable rate mortgages. And that had a lot to do with the housing crisis. And you can see 2006, 2007, a sharp decrease in construction nationwide. And then, like I said, here in the last two years, a slight increase, a slight recovery. All right, the Texas economy. We do have some things that are contributing to the state economy's recovery. We see housing and commercial real estate improving, natural gas and oil. Obviously, there's still a lot going on with that, drilling for natural gas, obviously. One really good indicator that we liked, some of the presentations that we've seen, was the vacancy rate, the industrial vacancy rate, which means that commercial renters, commercial or companies are either expanding business or need the room. So when that vacancy rate goes down, it's a good sign for the economy. Here's the job growth chart comparing Texas to the US average. The Texas average is represented in blue, the US average is the red line. And you can see that Texas has always either been really close to the US average or outperformed it. And this is from '05 on down. There's a really big cliff there, if you noticed, from 2007 to 2010. That's your crisis right there. And so you can see now, those dashed lines represent the Texas and US averages. So we're starting to get back now to the Texas average since 1990. So it's a good sign. All right, here's your Texas unemployment rate. You can see a sharp increase there, 2008, obviously, we knew about that. But now we're seeing good declines. The DFW unemployment rate is at 6.0. You can see it's right along with Texas and US. All right, now, regional economy. Obviously, we just spoke about unemployment. I told you about the DFW rate. But housing and commercial real estate are the two sectors that previously were a drag on the economy. And we're actually seeing them improve and help pull us out of this economic decline. Texas home sales show good increases since 2010. As you can see, it's 22% over the last 12 months, so that's always encouraging. The home sales inventory, is existing homes on the market. Anyone that's tried to sell a home in the last few years knows that that was a difficult thing to do. You have houses out there for months and months, sometimes a year. That's going down. And so that's driving home prices up, which is a good thing for existing values. Also, seriously delinquent mortgages, we've seen that rate decrease as well. So people are getting back to paying their mortgages off again. So that's a good sign.
Michael, on that slide, just for one second.
Sure.
Just for definition purposes.
Yes.
Regional economy, are we talking DFW or are we talking North Texas?
Yes, we're talking about DFW. Now, the home sales bullet there at the top was a state.
Right, for Texas.
Was a state rate, yes. But we are talking about, yes, local economy, DFW. A lot of this information was pulled from a roundtable that was recently given by the Federal Reserve Bank of Dallas. It was a roundtable held at the North Central Texas Council of Governments for Finance Directors. So a lot of the regional data is coming from there.
Thanks.
All right, so Trophy Club. And what do these things mean for Trophy Club? Well, if we continue to grow at the current rate that we're at, everyone knows in this room, and we've talked about this many times, we will be built out in about three to four years. And we know that a significant revenue source for the town currently is building permit revenue and new construction value that keeps getting added to the rolls. So that's extremely important to know for residents, that the growth won't always last. It won't be there, it's coming to an end soon. So that's important to consider. And I'll talk about what we can do to hopefully... You know, we know that the majority of our revenue comes from property tax. So we've got to protect that value, and I'll talk about that. We also know that we have a few commercial development opportunities still available. And I'll show you a map here in a second. Sales tax revenue is also very important, it ties into that commercial development. And let me just show you a couple of graphs we put together. The... And this graph, I just, I wanted to put something together for you so that you could see a little bit about, you know, how I look at sales tax. That blue line represents actual collections for sales tax since 2003. The red line represents those same collections in $2,003. In other words, it's been adjusted for inflation. So you and I both know a dollar today is worth more than a dollar tomorrow. And inflation makes sure of that. And as you can see, since 2003, actual collections have gone up 62%. But once we adjust for inflation, it's actually only gone up 30%, all right? So I want to make sure I showed you that. Switching gears now to permits. And I think this is a chart you're pretty familiar with. We think it's in the budget, and I can't remember if we put it in the calendar. But the values at the top of these bars represent the average home value of these permitted homes. Obviously, in 2013, we're, you know, this is, this is as of the most recent data I could obtain, we're at 86 permits. You know, one thing I really want to point out here, in 2012, we know that the Community Development Department did their best, permitting department, to get us caught up on permits that were backlogged in 2012. And so that number there doesn't represent how many permits came in the door and out the door. It represents us catching up on permits that were backlog, we were doing so many. And so it's not necessarily inflated, it's just that was a catch-up year. And I want to make sure everyone is aware of that. And we're still confident this year that we'll reach our goal of permits this year. We have a lot of development coming in. I know it's been a little bit slower during the beginning part of this year, but we still feel good about it.
What's the average, if the average home is $487,000, what's the average price, what's the average revenue that the town collects for a building permit on that?
Just so you know, when we budget building permits, we use a flat estimate, and it's $2,500 a permit.
Okay.
Now...
What I'm saying, I just want to make a comment. You say we're going to lose that revenue. But that same home contributes $2,483 in property tax at the current tax rate. So you really aren't losing anything when you lose the permit money because you replace it, you replace that tax stream, or that revenue stream with a tax stream.
Yes, that's true.
It just won't have it increasing as much.
It won't be, yeah, it won't be adding, adding, adding.
Let's be very clear, that's the average value of the permits issued. That does not represent the average value of...
On the tax...
A residential property in Trophy Club, Texas.
It's just the new ones coming in.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
But, that's the home...
I mean...
No, wait, but that's the average, Mike, that's the average of the homes in the Highlands and up in...
Well, Canterbury Hills.
Canterbury Hills, I mean, so that's where the permits are coming from, and that's where the tax is going to be added.
We've got some new growth in Hogan's Glen and that area. That all contributes to that.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, when you say we're going to lose the revenue from the permits, we're replacing it, we're actually replacing it with an ongoing revenue stream that goes on year after year after year after year after year in the way of tax assessment.
What revenue stream we will miss is the developer fees. Right? That are completely different than the building permits. Once we develop everything that we got to develop, they go away.
All right, and in this graph, I did this up, I just wanted to, and I know it's hard to see there at the bottom, but the blue represents existing value. The red at the top represents the new value that we've been adding over the last, this is five years. And so, you know, I showed you all those graphs nationally earlier. You know, how the decline was there, and it didn't look so good. You can see since 2008, we've actually been adding value. That's why I say Trophy Club's really unique in that regard, even in DFW. We're definitely blessed. All right, and then this is a graph you're probably familiar with, is the taxable assessed value, giving you the breakdown between residential and commercial within Trophy Club. I know I was discussing this with Mike earlier. I know there was talk about having a percentage goal between those two going forward to shoot four. We know right now that, the way it's dispersed now, it does put a lot of burden on the taxpayer, the resident, because it's, you know, it's mostly property tax, not commercial, so... And as Mike said earlier to us in our meeting, this is a map you're very familiar with. This is the last, in red are the commercial areas that we have available to us for development. Obviously, very important when you consider the size of the city and how much is left. And we had a discussion with a colleague of ours at the Appraisal District, just talking, you know, just trying to... Different things that he saw that, you know, maybe help us out or things to consider. And he said, wow, you know, this is looking at Trophy Club, the existing value's going to be very important going forward for homes. And so, things that affect home values, obviously, interest rates, especially with Trophy Club, all of these new homes going in. If the interest rates move, say, two points, it can be a lot when someone's trying to get a home. It'll affect the amount that they can afford. So we've benefited from those low interest rates for sure. So hopefully, they'll stay there until we're built out. He also mentioned the fact that schools are a major attraction point for people looking for homes. And we definitely have a good school district here that's doing a lot in Trophy Club. And I think it's had a lot to do with our growth as well. And so, just, you know, the idea of supporting the district and what they do to try to maintain a nice community. Code enforcement as well. Not necessarily to be overbearing, but to maintain the value, you have to be consistent with your code enforcement. And he definitely mentioned that. And as well, we know that interest rates are low for all things, so infrastructure improvements that need to be done to maintain the city's foundation, to make sure it doesn't get to a point where, you know, we're in a bind. Because we're in a good spot right now. We're adding value, interest rates are low. It's really something to try to not postpone, I guess is what I'm saying. And we all know that the council, along with the citizens, have been working on the Vision 2030, goals that we've set for the next 20 years, things that we want to achieve. And these are things that go along with everything in that vision. All right, so the conclusion. We're in a strong economic position. I think everyone's known that. But I think when you compare it to what's going on nationally and regionally, even in the state, you realize that we really are doing pretty good. Looking forward to the next budget cycle, I think we're in a good spot. I think we're going to keep adding value from last year. We should, staff anticipates being able to meet the goals that council has given us with regards to fiscal needs, things that you want to accomplish. And I think also, with this recovery, you've positioned yourself very well to take advantage of it with the commercial development that's there to be had. And so, I think, we feel pretty good. I mean, obviously, you always want to be conservative, but I think we, staff and after doing our research, we feel pretty confident with Trophy Club's position. I'll take any questions you have.
Well, I'm just going to make a comment, because when I look at the Trophy Club is in a great position, take advantage of the current economic recovery. I know we had a very difficult time about a year and a half ago. But I applaud, again, this council and this town for rezoning PD-30.
Yes.
Because we are in a position to use that property to the benefit of this town in growth, sales tax, and continuing to draw people to the area. So it was difficult, it was prudent, and it was a good decision, and I'm very glad that we did it.
I agree.
I'd just like to mention too, on these factors, I think the infrastructure improvements is something that we really have focused on in the last several years. You know, both in accomplishing and in putting some funds aside for it.
Yes.
So I think we're in better shape there than we might have been. So I'm, we need to continue, obviously. But that's really critical, it's kind of an important area.
This presentation was supposed to be short and sweet, so...
That's good.
Well done.
Very nice.
Well done, thank you.
I always love this map.
And basically, what I've asked Michael to do, and Kristen, Kristen did a lot of this work, by the way.
She put the whole PowerPoint together.
I'm sorry she fell ill. I was hoping that she'd get a little FaceTime with the council tonight. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that we're in a good position moving forward as we start this budget season. And I wanted to kind of paint that picture and tell you, and kind of give you a warm fuzzy feeling about where we stand and as we move forward. Some of the things that you'll get from us for this budget year will be difficult decisions. That's not going to go away. Budget decisions are always difficult. We always have more needs than resources available. And that's the beauty of budgeting, right? Is prioritizing those critical needs against limited resources. We're not in a position of our sister cities, thankfully, because we do have growth. And I just wanted to make sure that you were aware, because we are going to ask you to make some very difficult decisions as we move through another budget cycle. Because you know that we have significant needs sooner than later. And we'll talk about that later in the council meeting as it relates to the police facility or, you know, what we do from a capital improvement standpoint for our community. So we're in a good position. We still have very difficult decisions to make. And I want to thank Michael and Kristen and the Finance Department for putting this presentation together, kind of give you a sense of where we're at as we start this whole cycle again.
Thank you.
Well, I guess it's also something like this that draws the attention to developers and those who are interested in our area. I guess you just pull something like this out and say, here we are. Very nice.
Okay. Anybody, anything? All right. Okay, moving on to item two is discussion of agenda items posted for consideration on today's agenda. Does anyone have anything that they would like to talk about, ask questions, or anything at this point? Did we get a proposed for the 18th? For the... 8th?
Yes, ma'am.
It's on your desk.
It's on your desk.
Okay. Oh, I see it, okay. So the next item is discussion of proposed agenda items for the April 8th regular session. The idea here, by the way, is just that if there's anything about these items that you have any questions on that you specifically would like county staff to take a look at and be prepared for, this would be a good time to bring it up.
This is for April, is that right, April the 8th?
April 8th, yeah.
I guess that's not... May I ask a clarification question regarding an agenda item? Because I'm not sure where we're going to put it. We were talking about a presentation by the, this may be out, the parade presentation. Was that going to be this first, in April the 8th, or was it going to be the second April meeting?
I'm not aware of any presentation.
Well, you and I had talked, and I had asked you, and you said, oh, I'll put that on the agenda.
For a workshop kind of deal?
Yeah, I guess so, something. It went over your head, but we spoke.
I believe you. I believe you.
We will talk about this. Whether it's a workshop, I guess.
Okay, yeah, I mean, there's no action to be had at this point.
Okay, then that's, I'm sorry.
I know I've communicated with Deana Boudreau and told her I would be in touch with her tomorrow.
Okay, we'll be in touch with her about that. They're planning on...
I don't have anything on here.
There's not much there.
We'll come up with something by the 8th.
Yeah, I'm assuming something will come up by the 8th, but there's nothing on here to talk about, so...
Well...
It's all a learning experience.
Okay. Okay. Then I had another question.
We've got a pretty good agenda building already for the 8th.
Okay.
That will be the first week in April. First, what she whispered to me is, when is this golf cart town hall meeting?
I'm not going to say anything, you told me that was taken care of.
Schedule the first week in April.
Do you have a date for that? Because I'm going to send out...
Not yet.
An email to everybody. You don't have the date?
I will tomorrow.
Okay.
That's on our list of things to be discussed with the staff meeting.
Would you please forward that date to me?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
So we have about five minutes. We're done here, so we just take a break for a few minutes. Since we have a 7 o'clock start for the regular meeting. Regular session at 7:04. The invocation will be led by, will be provided by Chief Niffen, and the pledges by April Riling. If you'll please rise.
May we pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the blessings that it's brought. We thank you for the opportunity we have to live in a nation that offers us the freedoms that we enjoy. Freedoms that enable us to meet in a forum such as this and discuss the business of the town. Grant us the wisdom and understanding as we conduct that business. Blessed are servicemen and women, whether they are here, at home, or abroad. We pray that you would be with them and protect them, and return them safely to their families. Be with those who are ill and give them strength as they go through these times. Help them, heal them, and renew their faith daily. We pray these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
The golf team won again, did you see that?
Yes.
What did you say?
They always say go Bobcats, and I said their golf, the girls' golf team won another tournament.
And my core terms are right.
Okay. Do we have any, anyone signed up for citizens' presentations? Amy?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So I'm not going to read the whole thing, since we don't have to. Item number four. Wait a second.
Disconsent.
Okay. Just one second. Okay. Item numbers four, five, six, and seven are consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to remove number four.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion on the consent agenda with the remaining items?
I'll move to approve five, six, and seven of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Okay. Item four, consider and take appropriate action regarding Resolution 2013-4 of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, adopting 457 deferred compensation plan. Mr. Sly.
I can, well, I think Councilmember Rose has got some reservations, so I'll let him speak. If I need to clarify any points, I can.
Basically, the 457 plan is for employees so that they can set funds aside outside of their IRAs, that type of thing. It's another investment option or vehicle. We currently have, as I understand it, a 457 plan with ICMA. As I looked at this plan before I was aware that we had an ICMA plan and read the contract, I had some concerns about some of the items that seemed to me rather open in the contract. I also took a look, after I found out about ICME, ICMA, started to look at the fees, the administrative fees that are assessed. When a person does an investment in the market, there are very few things you can control. One of those things that you can control is your costs, of what it costs you to invest and how you do that investment. In the packet that we have at right, as we have the packet right now, the document says the fee structure will be enclosed in Exhibit A. We don't have Exhibit A. I went to ICMA, the folks that we do have, to find out what their costs are. And personally, I'm cost sensitive on investments. They charge 55 basis points for an administrative fee. They charge no loads, no commissions for an investor. One of the things you find when you look at these particular groups is they will have either a standard plan that an employee can invest in, or you... either a standard plan that an employee can invest in, or you can turn around and develop your own plan. And so I looked at their standard plans, and basically, personally, I'm an index investor because the costs are lowest in indexes. And so I looked at the index funds that were available between the plans. And in the ICM, S, ICMA S and P five hundred plan, the cost of fifty thousand dollars over twenty years at their fifty-five basis points is ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. The cost on a hypothetical fifty thousand dollar over twenty years at SDI is thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars. So you have a three, roughly a three thousand dollar difference in cost for the participant if they are investing in that particular program. Now, that's just within that investment. That's not the fifty-five percent basis points that I talked about, and I'll talk about that in a minute. When you look at that investment, and I talk about different vehicles, if you were to take and invest that money in your IRA, if you haven't maxed out your IRA capability at Vanguard, just looking at Vanguard, not looking at Fidelity or anybody else, it's one thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars. That's a difference of almost twelve thousand dollars to be in this plan. Now, I'm not going to speak against the four fifty-seven plans, because they do have a purpose when you max out, in my mind, your other plans. Also looked at some of their retirement plan, uh, their retirement, like their twenty forty-five plan, and got, got figures there. Uh, and in this case, the site that I was using talked about looking at a hypothetical return of six percent over twenty years, and that eleven thousand dollars will amount to twenty-five thousand dollars in twenty years. So, I'm concerned about that part of the equation. When I talked about the, uh, what it costs, the, the administrative costs, which are on top of that, the fifty-five basis points that we have with ICMA, I don't have that data in our contract, so I can't look at that. So, in my mind, what I have before me, I'm not comfortable with, I looked at it as incomplete information. Yes, it's another option, but as I look at that, uh, some cities have, I, I know from a discussion I had, uh, Plano and Arlington have had more than one four fifty-seven plan, and they have just reverted to one plan. They've, they shrunk it down to just one plan. There are so many variables that go along in this, it's, it's almost impossible to talk about it, frankly. And so, I, like I say, I'm not comfortable with this particular proposal as it sits. I don't know whether the right answer is to table it and get more information, or to take the concept and turn it over to CFAP and say, look, guys, go out and do some study, see what you come up with on costs, and see if there is something better, or, or do we need to look at something better in the arena to go multiple plans, or if we can, within ICMA, expand what they have to get better options for our employees? I mean, they have a pretty good, both plans have, I don't know, twenty or thirty options for the employees, but I'm not comfortable.
Okay, the, I, I think the thing is here, we're not taking away ICMA.
No.
And we're providing another option while it is not necessarily the, you know, the option we would choose, do we have the position to take away else, somebody else's choice?
Uh, and? In addition to that, I would think that the investor is getting financial advice, either from their own or other, to determine what the best option for their financial goals and plans are. Again, it's another option. It, it's not mandatory.
No, it's not mandatory.
And so it seems like that by giving them more to choose from allows them to be more creative and flexible in their financial planning.
Has anyone requested this?
Yes. David Farabee requested to provide that service. David, David Farabee is a representative for Security Benefit. He is a retired state legislature from District sixty-nine. Uh, he provided these, these same services at my last city, uh, and every, every open enrollment period that we had, he was there in a very non-threatening way to answer questions. And quite frankly, we have not had anybody participate in our open enrollment to date with our current provider. And as a constant, we have, I think, twelve employees participating in this program, four fifty-seven program. It's a very good program, uh, you know, and it's strictly voluntary. All we're asking you to consider tonight is allowing our employees to have the choice. And if they choose not to because of some of the concerns that Councilmember Rose has addressed, that's their business. Uh, and, and no one's twisting their arms. But what I, what I am very excited about is the prospect of having someone who is smarter than the average bear in the financial world to be able to answer questions that we might have as it relates, and how does it impact our, uh, financial planning moving forward.
So I would.
I'd make a motion. I'd make a motion. Hold on a minute. Let me get my computer back where it's supposed to be. That we approve resolution two thousand thirteen dash four of the Town Trophy Club adopting four fifty-seven deferred compensation plan.
Second. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other, is any discussion? No? I, I personally think, given the fact that it's a choice, and actually, given the fact that it's our employees putting it on here, and they're the ones that want to have the choice, um, that's my feeling we should allow that choice.
I would agree with that, Mayor.
Yeah, I, I hear everything that Councilman Rose is saying. I agree with most of what Councilman Rose is saying, but, yeah, it's their choice.
The only question I would have is if I have more companies come forward and request that same opportunity, is the answer going to be sa- the same?
Who knows? They.
It, it, it doesn't cost the town anything.
That's the other question, yes.
And you get to the point where, I mean, if we end up having five vendors, as an example, to provide four fifty-seven services, uh, you know, it's probably what some of these other towns have, have experienced, and therefore retracted the number of vendors, uh, because it does convolute the, the, the playing field for four fifty-seven services. I, I've had personal experience with this particular vendor. Uh, I have been very pleased with their, uh, services, for, you know, on an individual and organizational, from an organizational perspective. What he told me he did, that he was going to do in Burke Burnett, is exactly what he did. And, and in a very non-threatening way. He stood off to the side, um, and if people had questions that wanted to, that related their four fifty-seven program, it didn't matter if it was his or somebody else's, they could approach him and he could talk to them about it.
Is this something as a council that we would come back and review on a yearly basis, or just as needed, or?
Typically, no. This, all this does is gives, gives the staff the authority to, to set it up in the payroll system, so that if anybody wants to participate moving forward, they can.
Click it, yep.
There is one other point. The, the fifty-five basis points that I talked about with ICMA, uh, that is their most expensive rating plan. They, they, when they work as an administrator for a town, they look at the number of employees in that town and the number of employees that are in the plan. And if you have fewer employees in the plan, then those administrative costs, that fifty-five basis points that each employee would be charged that's in it, that number would go up, however. Note the quick however. Trophy Club is in ICMA's blue plan. The blue plan is the small plan, so if we have a loss of employees from ICMA to some other plan, that fifty-five basis points at this point's not going to go up. So, that side of the question, equation is not a problem. But now, I'll probably go along, I'll go along here and give you, the employees the opportunity, but please, buyer beware. Talk to folks, find out what the cost of an investment is, because it is one thing that you can control.
Very good point. Thank you. Okay. All those in favor? All right. Okay, moving on to, thank you, on to item eight, uh, the annual award presentation to the police department. Chief Niffen?
This is one of my favorite, probably my favorite part of being a chief of police. This, this is the time that I get an opportunity to, to tell the council and the mayor and the town staff and all the people here in the council, and all the people that are going to watch this on video later on, what a great group of people you have in your police department. And you do have a lot of exceptional individuals here. In your department, you've got over two hundred and sixty years of experience. Hundred and forty-plus years of that experience is right here in Trophy Club, and that's exceptional. The Texas Commission on Law Enforcement Standards and Education hands out, they don't hand them out. Texas Commission on Law Enforcement Standards and Education has four certifications that these officers earn, and they earn it by putting in their years, by getting training, by going to college. They're the basic, intermediate, advanced, and masterpiece officer certifications. In your department, you have six masterpiece officers, five with advanced, and five with an intermediate, and currently with two with basic. Those people who have less than a year in, they'll be getting their basic after they get to year in. We're real proud of this. We have a number of people who have earned a good conduct award this year, and for the sake of brevity, I won't mention them all. They will be given their good conduct awards, however, at the next staff meeting. Sergeant, would you come help me hand these awards out?
See where we're going to start here.
Patriotism Award is a award that's given to an officer who's spent at least one year in honorable service since September eleventh, two thousand and one. I think everybody in the department has already received theirs, who's earned that right, except Officer Tracy Shields, one of our new officers. By virtue of her years of experience with New York State Police, we're going to award her that medal tonight. Please come forward.
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you again tell us what that award was for? The patriotism?
Patriotism Award. Yes, ma'am, that's one year of service. Everything's tied to free. One of the things that we like to, to honor is service to the department, service to the town over time, and having a five-year service award is a big deal. And when you couple that with a five-year safe driving award, that's a real big deal. So, Adam Watkins is five-year service and five-year safe driving. Training is a real big issue in law enforcement, and we couldn't do it without the officers who volunteer to go to training classes to become instructors. And we have two instructors pins to give out tonight, and only one of them is here. So Officer Sullivan, if you'd come forward, receive your instructor's pin, please. I'd also like to recognize Officer Scott Voight. He earned his advanced instructor certification. Unfortunately, the company we deal with doesn't have a pin for that, Scott, but I do want to recognize that.
Chief, maybe we can get one of those regimens and put an oak leaf cluster on it.
We also have two officers who have attended training to become certified mental health officers in state. We're proud of that. We're proud of their efforts to do that. It's something that goes a little bit beyond, and, uh, it helps us deal with situations that are sometimes very, very difficult. So, Barry, Jeff Roach, would you all come forward, please?
Yeah, one with glasses, one without.
He works in the drug program undercover.
And as I mentioned, we have two officers who have attained their intermediate certification this year. Officer Hankins and Officer Watkins. We have one officer who has come to us, Adele Ramirez, with an advanced certification. He's not here tonight, though. And this year, we've had one officer who attained his masterpiece officer certification. That is a combination of, of a large number of years' experience and a great deal of training, and we like to welcome Officer Scott Voight up here to get his masterpiece award. And we have three officers who have earned an educational achievement award for acquiring their bachelor's degree. We're real proud of this as well. Officer Stubblefield has stepped out. Officer Ramirez is not here, but one is, Sergeant Norcross, if you'll come forward and receive your educational achievement award. All right, now we'll get into the commendations themselves. Let me read. Community service medal is awarded to police officers who have contributed time and energies on duty or off duty to community service projects, organizations, or special events, which further enhances a positive relationship between the community and the department. Accumulation of two hundred or more hours of riders, not related. Accumulation of 200 or more hours of riders not related to the officer in the department's ride-along is one of those things. We have two officers who were nominated by supervisors for the Community Service Award. For the time that they've spent with civilian riders, and also for the time that they've spent in the school zones actively displaying their commitment to the community. Officer Barry Sullivan and Officer Adam Watkins, as I said, were nominated by supervisors who stated that their actions and motivations to serve and protect the community is an example for all others to follow. Adam? Barry? Police Commendation Medal is awarded to police officers for significant service to the department or for an extraordinary act of performance to a lesser degree required than aforementioned rewards, such as the Medal of Honor and Valor. It can be for a significant service period, an extraordinary act, or a series of acts that are viewed as commendable. We have three officers who were nominated or recommended by their peers or a supervisor. Officer Adam Watkins, and I'm not gonna read these commendations out to you. Officer Ed Beetler and Officer Barry Sullivan. Officer Watkins' commendation was as a result of an incident involving a suicide in town. He was recommended, and the supervisor stated that his cool head and concentrated reaction preserved the crime scene in one of the finest manners that arriving investigators had experienced, and they remarked so. So, Adam? Officer Sullivan was recognized by the Mothers Against Drunk Driving for his efforts to combat the scourge of drunk driving. In 2011, he arrested more intoxicated drivers than any other officer in the Trophy Club Police Department. We appreciate that, and it's a testament to his dedication to the profession and the safety of this community. Officer Edward Beetler was recommended by one of the paramedics due to the assistance that he provided at the scene of a CPR incident. He displayed great poise and control throughout the call, reflecting upon him and the department the definition of duty, devotion to duty that all officers and firefighters should possess. Ed? Certificate of Merit is awarded to a police officer for meritorious service that's commendable. And we have two people who will be receiving the Certificate of Merit awards. Both of them for the same thing. Officer Edward Beetler and Todd Mothe. Were instrumental in developing additional firearms training and qualifications protocols, and it has been a tremendous success and tremendous benefit to the community and the department. We appreciate your efforts, Edward. If you'd come forward, Todd's not here. Alright, we have a certificate, excuse me, a Meritorious Conduct Award. Meritorious Conduct is awarded to police officers for consistent, unselfish, and significant service to the department. Superior performance and attention to duty has placed them above other officer, of the department members. May also be awarded for those officers for outstanding contributions to law enforcement in general or contributed a high degree of success in a difficult project over a period of time. October 4th, there was a reported kidnapping at Byron Nelson High School. Y'all probably all remember that. An officer who showed up, took control, gathered ongoing and pertinent information, coordinated the tactical responses of many agencies throughout this area. Although it resulted in being a hoax, we're glad of that. This officer's commitment to duty and the department were exemplary. We appreciate his efforts. We're giving the Meritorious Conduct Award, it's recommended by our supervisor, Officer Barry Sullivan. Alright. We're gonna recognize one of our Reserve Officers, Officer of the Year. This individual's been here a while. Completed his training quickly, adapted to our community, and has performed admirably. His time and commitment and his professionalism have been a significant benefit to the department. This officer was nominated for this award by two supervisors, as is required by policy. It was noted that he should be commended for superior and unflagging support to the department. The long hours and dedication as a Reserve Officer he provided are instrumental to the success of the department. His professionalism brings great credit upon himself, the Trophy Club Police Department, and the Town of Trophy Club. And we appreciate his efforts. Our Reserve Officer of the Year is Chris Hankins. And that's all I got. One more. One more. This past year, supervisors have been researching a new evaluation process. And this research required the supervisors closely evaluate officer's performance and productivity. Several models were created, and in every model, this individual officer showed to be one of the most well-rounded, if not the most well-rounded officer in the department, in all areas. In this officer's words, "I don't like hanging around the police department, I like being out on the streets." And that's what he does. He shows up early, is usually on the streets before his shift starts. He's never idle and constantly on the go. According to his supervisors, he's versatile and flexible in his patrol routine, doesn't concentrate on one area. His enforcement actions are balanced between strong traffic presence and to a strong neighborhood and business patrol. These contributions to the police department, the Town of Trophy Club, and the state of Texas exemplify the finest traditions of law enforcement. And our Officer of the Year is Officer Edward Beetler. That concludes our presentation tonight. Thank you.
Before everyone disappears out the door, I wanna add my personal thanks for all that you do. In the Air Force, I was taught to salute the uniform. I'll salute the uniform, but in this case, I wanna salute the men and women that wear it and the families that support them. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You ladies and gentlemen, I don't know just how much you realize what the people of this town think of you. One of the great things in that financial presentation that you were bored with this evening, a lot of that has to do with you because the way you control the crime out here and just your presence. Because a town with a bad reputation of its police department doesn't fare well. And a town that has an exemplary police department, such as Trophy Club does, thrives. We, we, we have, we owe you a great debt for all that you do and all that you sacrifice. And for me, I wanna thank you very much for everything you do and the risk that you take every day. It's not enough to just say thank you, but that's all I can do.
I was just gonna say, so Danny's basically, and Bill'll take care of everything I wanted to say. But, on a personal note, just wanna again, thank you guys for what you do. And when I moved to Trophy Club, one of the things that people said was, why would I wanna move to Trophy Club, why wouldn't I wanna move to Trophy Club? People said, "You don't wanna be in Trophy Club because the cops are strict." And I said, "Well, that's good, that's what I want." So, I appreciate you guys, your reputation is known out there. And on a personal note, again, some of you have had an engage in the last few weeks on some issues. And I just wanted to extend my personal gratitude for everything you guys do.
Thank you. And I want to say I enjoyed visiting with two on the number 17, Hogan's Glen, the other day. They were out there watching the traffic on Trophy Club Drive. And I said, "Are you making some money for the town?" And they said, "No, we're slowing them down." So, it's just wonderful to have you and for you to be a part of the fun stuff in Trophy Club as well as taking care of the important things. And so, I appreciate it. And if your name is Bob, will you please stand up?
No, Bob's not here.
No, no, Bob.
I know Bob.
His son, Bob. He wants, he wants his name to be Bob, and that's why I'm asking. I've visited with the family, and you're not gonna stand up? No. Anyways, great, thank you so much. What a great family you are.
And what everybody else said, but I'd also like to mention that, you know, I really appreciate Chief's focus on community policing. And I think that you all exemplify that in such a phenomenal way, in the way you relate to the community. And I think that's really important. It's really important for people to, to be out there, to be, you know, diligent and all of that. But it's also important to have a relationship with the community. And I think you all do a phenomenal job. And in everything you do. So, thank you. Okay, now you can go, if you like.
We need to get a group photo.
They're gonna get a group photo real quick, yeah.
Okay, cool.
If you wanna stick around here about a traffic, traffic situation. Oh, everybody? Well?
Beetler, I can't see you. Are we good? Great, thank you very much.
Chief Niffen leaves at 240 years.
Yeah, it goes down to about half, right?
I'm glad he can't hear y'all.
If you take Niffen out of the mix, the 240 goes to 80 years.
That's right.
Officer Beetler advised me that he too had a five-year, with five-year safe driving. So, we'll get him that award as well.
Alright. Okay. Ready? Can you go? Okay. Item number nine. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the traffic analysis report for the Highlands neighborhoods conducted by the police department. Chief?
Mayor and Council, you have before you a memo regarding the Highlands Traffic Study. It's a highly unscientific study, given the limitations of the radar trailer. But it does go through and give you the average maximum speed per hour, and also the 85th percentile speed for the week, each week that it was out in the Highland area. 85th percentile speed generally was around 20 miles an hour. Of course, I'm not a traffic engineer and can't tell you if that should be rated at 20 miles an hour or not. But this radar trailer, even with its limitations, does seem to indicate that we might wanna look into this a little further in terms of doing an official engineering study on the area.
So, what's going to be the outcome of this study for the objective of slowing down the speed?
I didn't get a chance to, to visit with the attorney today about this, but I do have a question for her, and I hate to put her on the spot.
I'm going to also, go ahead.
I know the transportation code is, is pretty restrictive about what you can and cannot do in terms of speeds. But if the council were to consider imposing a 25 mile an hour speed limit across the town unless otherwise posted, would that, would we have to do a complete engineering study to get that done? Or do they have that authority? Yeah, I hate to put you on the spot.
Had you asked me that today, I would've probably looked into it.
Yeah, I know.
The transportation code allows a lowering to 25. I don't think it dispenses with the speed study. I can't remember off the top of my head. I honestly will have to just pull it up and look and see exactly what the language says with, with regard to the 25 speed limit across the board. I know a few years ago, the legislature enacted that, and cities were able to do that. But I don't know off the top of my head whether there's any type of traffic study that's...
That idea, Council, is not to, to, I don't think that, you know, Trophy Club Drive or some of the major arterials that we have in town, Trophy Club Drive or Indian Creek.
Bobcat.
Bobcat. You know, I'm not advocating that we lower those speed limits, but it may be, if, if it's your desire to lower the speed limits in the, in the neighborhoods, that would be an approach that I would strongly encourage you to consider.
Unless I'm mistaken, you can't pass an ordinance that sets the speed at 25 miles an hour unless otherwise posted. Because the transportation code says it's 30 miles an hour unless otherwise posted. Which means you would have to put signage on every street and every block, both ways.
I think we need to check into that further because, one way or the other, because there are place, towns that have lower speeds, and I don't know that they have it on every street. But, I agree, that it's questionable.
I brought it, I brought the law last time.
I personally, I have to say that I'm a little disappointed with this study. You know, saying that it's, you know, we had some maximum speeds at 45 miles an hour, but we don't know where.
How many?
Bother's me a lot.
The instrument that was used is not exactly...
No, I don't believe that. I think it was how it was used. It wasn't, you know, I mean, couldn't you just download it every time you moved it?
Pardon me?
Can't you download the data each time you move the device?
We could have. We would.
You didn't.
We did not.
But you're also indicating that you're not getting the traffic going...
We only have traffic in one direction.
Coming toward it, not going...
Coming toward it, not going opposite direction.
I believe you said it was a very unscientific study.
Yeah, a- and it was, a- a- and, and it was very, uh, enlightening. I, I, I don't think you, you have to stretch very far to, to think that when you see those, uh, radar trailers, the natural inclination is to slow down. And it, and we did get a lot of positive feedback from folks in, that, where the trailers were positioned because it did slow the traffic down, you know? And it may be that, that may be something that we want to consider in the next budget cycle to.
Span on, yeah.
Well, to, uh.
Or to put some.
We only have one.
Well, yeah.
You know, we may want to consider purchasing additional and use those as, uh, means to slow the traffic down i- in areas that are, you know, identified as hotspots or whatever. But again, it was like I said, the last time we had this discussion, a few citations generally do the same thing. You know, if we can, unfortunately, what you saw tonight was a preponderance of our police department. You know, so we are very limited in being able to set somebody out there.
On every street.
For an extended period of time to write those citations. You know, w- we've got an entire town to cover and at, at any given time, we'll have at least two patrolmen on the, on the street. Well, if you take one of those guys off the street, or gals off the street, you know, you've just taken fifty percent of the entire work for, or, or, or police force.
Well, he's not off the street, just on a different street.
But, but if they're, you know, waiting for that speeder to write citations, they are in, in effect, you know, a singular purpose officer as opposed to a patrol officer who's, you know, can be called into a situation at any given time.
Yeah, but we, I mean, we put people sit and wait for speeders in different situations. I've seen them all over town, so it would.
But, but when, when you're targeting a particular area and to, to send a message to the community that we're not going to tolerate speeding in neighborhoods, it's, you know, patrol officers will, uh, sit out and look at frontage roads and, you know, uh, monitor speeds on Trophy Club Drive and, a- as an example, or around the roundabout, or whatever the case is. They do that, yes ma'am. But when you take them and with a specific mission in mind, you're, y- they're there for a singular purpose as opposed to those officers who are patrolling and, and radar, using radar guns, and then the radio goes off, they, they leave kind of thing.
Why wouldn't they do the same thing? When they park on Indian Creek or they park on that street, what's the difference?
Well, again, we're, we're trying to identify a singular area or, or a, a, a spot area. You know, i- if, if there were a homicide or something like that, of course they would. Of course they would, but.
But I just don't see it as any different.
The point I'm making is we don't have the resources to, to be able to just set somebody out on Broadway or Galloway.
Permanently, yeah.
Yeah.
There are technological advances made every year in the radar industry. And, uh, I'll be at the Chief's conference next week, and I'm sure there'll be a number of them there. The trailer issue, it has to be dragged somewhere. It has to be set up. There are man-portable, uh, items that can be strapped to a, a telephone pole and left for an extended period of time. They're not as visible as the, uh, as, yeah, I know we don't have telephone poles, but to a, a stop sign or something like that, they can be sighted in various locations. They're less obtrusive, and people would be less likely to slow down when they, they pass by them. And, uh, it's something that, to consider when we, when we look at radar options this year.
They, on, um, what is it? Precinct line. On precinct line down towards South Lake, um, there's one that's, is just on a pole.
Yes, ma'am.
Are they, how expensive are they?
You know, I don't know. We've not priced those in a long time.
Because one of the things I was thinking about is it maybe a neighborhood might choose to have such a thing in their neighborhood. You know, the people that came and talked to us mentioned, you know, they were, would be willing to do some things to, you know, to provide some additional surveillance or, not surveillance, but monitoring.
A couple of different angles you want to go at. Either you want a, a radar sign that's gonna tell people how fast they were going so they'll slow down, or you want one that's gonna collect data. And the one that's gonna collect data doesn't have a light on it. It just collects data.
But I think the greater thing would be to get them slowed down.
I think Council Monroe's is ahead of me. I'm after him.
I have the question. We talked about the method that was used to accomplish this study and the errors that were introduced in it, if you could say that way, or the lack of the equipment. Do I have to have different equipment to do this with? Is this study, I mean, for what it did? Is it not valid?
It is valid up to a point. As I said, it's the fl- the light flashing slows some people down. If you're the second car behind it, you see the lights flashing at somebody up ahead of you, you're probably gonna slow down a little bit. That's gonna skew the results somewhat.
Which means the eighty-fifth.
The numbers that were recorded are accurate numbers.
Which means if it skewed it, if it slowed it down, if there were more people going more than thirty-five to pull that average up, what you're saying is because of the type of mechanism that was used, even though in our discussions, I understand that as soon as it flashes the first time, it's captured the speed.
Yes, sir.
So even given that factor, what we're saying is we're looking, I mean, if we're looking at setting the speed limit at twenty-five miles an hour, and the eighty-fifth percentile on that string is right about twenty-one, we'd have to raise it four miles per hour additional in order to pull it up. The maximum, the average maximum speeds are running twenty-five as it is. Uh, twenty-five, twenty-three to twenty-six, about, about twenty-four and a half or twenty-five. So even the average speeds are below, or right at the twenty, you know, at the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. So my question is, for the attorney and the chief, do we have the capability of performing a study that will hold up to state standards without going to an outside agency?
The statute speaks to, and I pulled it up while y'all were talking there. The sta- statute speaks to an engineering and traffic investigation, um, the same as the Texas Transportation Commission conducts. So you're looking at that standard. I think you're looking at a bona fide traffic engineering investigation and study and looking at the language of the statute relative to the twenty-five miles per hour. It basically says that the governing body, it may set the speed limit at twenty-five if you determine that the speed limit is unreasonable or unsafe, that, as it currently is. But the only way you're gonna make that determination is gonna be based upon some kind of study and analysis of that, um, of the speed on that road. Because the statute goes further to say that if you adjust those speed limits, then there are annual reports that you have to make with regard to a number of citations and speed of vehicles, um, to support, uh, to show essentially that is the appropriate speed limit for that road. So, um, I think in answer to the town manager's first question, um, is an engineered speed study or some kind of study required? Yes, I, I do believe it is. And I don't know how the council makes a determination of unsafe and unreasonable unless it's based on some kind of study.
Yeah, I, I think that the issue, uh, in my opinion, the issue isn't whether it's thirty miles an hour is unsafe. It's whether people are going thirty miles an hour. It is really where it comes down to. So the idea is that we, we're, we think if we take it down to twenty-five, you'll bring them to go thirty. But I don't know if that's valid.
As we discussed, or at least my proposal last time, is I think this is much, much ado about nothing. Uh, to spend money on a traffic study when we obviously don't have a problem. I mean, we don't have a large number of citations. We don't have a large number of accidents. We don't have any extraordinary number of people being run over by cars. Yes, there are some citizens that are complaining about some speeders. But I'm gonna tell you, if the speed limit was ten miles an hour, we're gonna have some speeders. Uh, it's, uh, and then to, I'm, I'm very comfortable in saying that if it's not thirty miles. Now, you didn't, you didn't read and study all that, but, uh, if it's, if it's not thirty miles an hour, you have to post it everywhere. Then to spend the expense to put all those signs around town and then to spend the expense of having somebody do all those reports and keep up with all that tracking every year is absolutely ludicrous.
I would agree with you.
And I think that we talked about, um, a speed awareness month. I really think.
Yeah, so one of the things that I'd propose for a future agenda item is to, uh, uh, identify or appoint or designate wherever the word is, June, as a speed awareness month within Trophy Club. Uh, and I thought June was convenient because it's the first month of summer vacation for our schoolchildren. And then that's, that's the time of period where they're gonna be out in the front yards or going between houses or whatever. Um, just for a point of note, uh, coming to the meeting tonight at five forty PM, I drove down Broadway from Kingsford, and I saw six, seven, eight kids riding bicycles. I saw two moms with their baby carriages, you know, pushing baby strollers, pushing babies and stuff like that. And I saw a red pickup truck coming towards me. And, uh, that's probably the guy who was doing forty-five all these times because he was flying. And I'll tell you, and I, I, I'll also say this to those guys watching the video, if I did have his license number, I'd be saying it right now because it's ridiculous. Anybody going forty-five on those streets, that's ridiculous. Thirty-five to me is ridiculous. Forty-five is absolutely insane.
Honestly, I just don't think people understand how slow twenty miles is and really how slow thirty is. Thirty's slow.
Not in a neighborhood.
Not in a neighborhood.
Not in a neighborhood.
No, no, I mean, I think it's appropriate.
Yeah.
I just don't believe that people understand how slow twenty-five miles is.
So you're talking building the awareness?
Yes, I do. I, they don't know.
But I like the speed awareness month. I think if we.
I do too.
We make it a big event, we talk about it, and they're, you're, but that, and that's for the S- Trophy Club citizens. They'll get it, but the people that, the visitors.
They come in and out, they, or you're.
It's just, Chief, how long you been a police officer?
Almost thirty-nine years.
How many?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine years. Have they had speeders all those thirty-nine years?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
There was a few quicker horses maybe back then.
Well, and, and, I'm, I mean, to say that I, to say this hi- hits close to home for me is a literal statement. It hits close to home for me because my home's in these, on these streets. Yeah, I'm all for making June a Trophy Club speeding awareness month, whatever you wanna call it. Making, not making, helping residents understand how thirty miles per hour is important in our neighborhoods. Um, watch for speeding, watch for kids in the street, watch for kids in the yards. All it's gonna take is, and, and it, matter of fact, Sunday, I was out in the yard, uh, hitting a volleyball with my daughter, and she hits the volleyball awry and it goes out into the street. Well, if there's a guy doing forty-five miles per hour down that street, boom. And so I just told her, "Don't chase the ball in the street. Let dad get it." But what if dad's not there? What if she's out there playing with her friends? I mean, that's just, it's dangerous, guys. It's dangerous.
What we can do is continue to, to deploy the trailer.
Yeah.
That, that was very effective, and, and like I said, we got a lot of positive feedback when the, when the trailers were deployed. I just assume, put it out there and have it do its thing as opposed to sitting up here idle. So, so we can, we can, we can do that as well.
I think that is a really good idea because, please, I don't want anybody to think that we're minimizing in any way the risk. I mean, I've, I know what can happen, um, but I don't think the speed limit is the answer because people always exceed the speed limit or frequently exceed the speed limit. I think that the awareness is much more effective in this case.
And, and you know what? I know that if you, if people are going up and down that street a lot, they're going to become more and more aware of it. And I am a trained thirty-mile person on Carroll in South Lake. And it's because of those blinking things.
Yeah, so I would say.
I'm trained.
I would say i- if we, if when we get to the budget time, talk about what the cost of those type of signs are.
Yeah.
I, I think that's something to, to address or discuss.
We can certainly look into it.
For that one person or two persons or three persons out there that like to do forty-five miles an hour, there's another solution. It's called photo enforcement speed.
Yes, sir.
You mean person, I mean, private photo?
That little radar unit takes your picture as you go by and posts your speed on a picture. And then they follow up.
Oh, I was thinking about your iPhone.
Yeah, we.
That one works too. iPhone works too, but it doesn't post speed.
You can't give a tick, what? Well, it's, honestly, God truth. I mean, I, I would trust, if I, if I had that person's license plate from today, if I was to give that license plate to Chief, I'd say, "Hey, Chief, this guy was speeding." And maybe, maybe next time you see that car, you know, clock him to see how fast he's going. Yeah, I, I think that would work, but.
Okay, so I think that, uh, we don't need to take any action right now. That we are in agreement that we need to, in which, whatever way you think is appropriate, um, we need to look at the awareness, but to monitor, um, and move the sign around if possible. Did you want to say something?
No, ma'am. Don't we have some speaker?
Oh, thank you. Sorry. I'm sorry, did you?
Put the mic up and.
Kevin Callahan. Kevin Callahan, twenty-five, twenty-five, Stratfield. First of all, this is a very, um, important topic. And the gentleman who brought it up from the very beginning a few months ago really do support this because I have a three-year-old, and it's really important. I see the kids walking in the street, and as I'm listening to all this stuff, I've been thinking about it and going along with what Danny's really said is that it doesn't matter if the speed limit's twenty, twenty-five, thirty. You're still gonna have people speeding. We've already listened to, um, Mike and, and Chief Niffen talking about you can't police at twenty-four hours a day. So really, I was thinking about this, and I even mentioned it to Clint the other day. It was like, you know, the only way you can address this is to have something where people are, it's brought to their awareness twenty-four hours a day. And when you brought the, um, little portable trailers out there, it's twenty-four hours a day. And what Jeanette was talking about is the little signs. I was, I'm glad you brought it up because I was gonna bring it up. Is that those signs, when you're driving through South Lake, people don't really know what that sign is doing. If it's taking your picture, it just makes you slow down its awareness. So we can have this awareness month. The people who are speeding aren't gonna be at that awareness month. And they're probably not gonna be watching this video and listening to us. You have to have something out there twenty-four hours a day, whether it's that little sign. And you could even probably go to the, our Highlands HOA. I mean, Mike and I have been to the meetings. We've got an abundance of funds in our HOA. And if it's the life of our kids, why don't we go to them, to our own HOA and ask for some money to say, "Hey, can we put some signs up there?" Talk to our attorney and say, "What are the parameters?" Other than that, the only other way to do it is you put some of those little, whether they're speed bumps. And I know we got a problem with Danny and getting there on time for the fire. But if you strategically put a speed bump in the center of a long street where they can't get up to that speed, or you put those speed bumps where they're, whenever you go so fast, it makes a loud noise like your tires are hitting, and it just kind of makes you slow down. So just, I really support the idea of twenty, something there twenty-four hours a day and not spending thousands of dollars on these traffic studies to make it twenty-five dollars, I mean, twenty-five miles an hour. Nobody's gonna slow down at twenty-five miles an hour, so, what I say.
Thank you, and I apologize for missing the note about the speaker.
So we know we're, we're looking at June. I guess it's not an official agenda item, but we're talking about June for an awareness month, and we're gonna talk about getting more signs in the next budget possibly.
That's on the future agenda item list, and yes.
Right, perfect.
All right, item ten. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the expenditure of the remaining two thousand and eight Park Fund funds toward the installation of two T-ball backstops located within Independence East in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand, fifty-six dollars and fifty cents.
Mayor, before we, I know Adam is prepared to talk about this issue, but, um, we're not talking about spending the remaining.
I was wondering about that.
Yeah, it's just, it's just eleven thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah, this, we're, we're. What this particular project is about is related to the extension of the trail that LDS is providing, the, the trail extension to tie it into the existing system that we have in, in the east. And providing for backstops on two T-ball fields on that vacant field. And, and helping prevent balls from going over that wall into the lily field backyards and that kind of thing. We've already talked about all of this, uh, and we were just looking for the. We've already talked about all of this, and we were just looking for the council's approval for, for spending that $11,000. The park board has already made that recommendation. I'm taking the, I'm stealing your thunder, Adam, but, but it would certainly be the staff's recommendation that you approve the $11,000 and some change amount for the two backstops, and let's get those things up.
And, okay. Then I would, I move that we take action to expend the remaining 2008, wait a minute, 2008 Park Bound Funds toward the installation, some of the money, of two T-ball backstops located within Independence East in an amount not to exceed $11,056.50, and authorize the town manager to execute any necessary documents. Is that, I mean, that's it.
You made the motion, right? That's our second thing.
I read that.
Yes, we're fine. It's the remaining, but then she conditioned that with some of the funds.
Yeah, she put in, she put in a qualifier provisional phase that made it okay.
Adam, did you have something you wanted to add to the, or?
No, I'm just, I'm just here to answer any questions.
Okay.
There was a small part of me that was hoping this was consent, I told mine, he said, no.
I think Danny was-
No, I don't have anything.
A second, oh, I think he did. Okay, Beth?
I have a question, and it's not on the baseball fields. It's on this sentence down here, an explanation that says, "Staff is currently in the process of identifying the placement for trees adjacent to this area to create additional screening for the residents."
I'll talk about that. I'll talk about that in the town manager's update.
Okay.
Okay. All right, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? I think, I just mentioned, I think this is a good idea to, I think it'll help someone with the things coming over the people's property, so. All those in favor? Okay, we're good.
Nice time.
I think we made a zith there for, nothing right. Okay, item 11, consider and take appropriate action to approve a developer's agreement with Northwest Independent School District for the public water line to be constructed at Lakeview Elementary School.
Want to pass this to Stephen, mayor. We actually, I thought this was going to be the, on the consent agenda, this is a developer agreement with, with NISD. Stephen, you want to pick it up from there?
This is for, because of the NISD Lakeview Elementary School and the, and the rush that they're in to get that under construction to be opened by August, we were finishing out the developer's agreement. There's just one item is for a water line that will be in a dedicated easement that will go around the building for fire suppression purposes, and this developer's agreement covers that water line and the associated inspection fees related to that line.
Okay, I move to approve the developer's agreement with Northwest Independent School District for the public water line to be constructed at Lakeview Elementary School, 100 Village Trail, and authorize mayor to execute any documents.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have one quick question. The easement that that line is in, if I read, I may have misread the developer's agreement, but is that a mud easement or a town? It is a mud easement.
It's a mud easement.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we're good. Consider and take appropriate action regarding financial and variance report dated February, Michael? February 2013?
Council and, mayor and council, financial report was given to you. I do have a correction to make that was pointed out to me, and that's what's sitting on the dice in front of you. There's wording on the variance report and the general fund about what months actual collections exceeded prior year collections, and that was, that was an error, so it was deleted. So you're not really going to see, the only correction is, is a deletion, and it's in the sales tax section. So when you make your motion later, if you would please note the corrected wording on the variance report, as I said. Things that stood out with this variance report, this financial report, nothing major. I mean, obviously, we've, we've discussed the permitting. We still feel confident, after having talked with community development, Stephen, that reaching our goal is still attainable with new things that are coming online. We expect a surge in building permits to come through. Obviously, sales tax came in a little bit under compared to last year where we were with regards to collections, and we know that the February collections are related specifically to December sales, so overall, for the year, we're still exceeding last year's collection, so I still feel pretty good about the projection that we made going into this budget year.
Michael, is 88% on our taxes at this point in time consistent with?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I've looked at last year, and we're, we're still, we're still on target to collect almost 100%. We do have some latecomers, I guess, but historically, that's, that's usually where we're at around this time, the end of February. Let me just scroll down here. With regards to expenses, nothing new that's significant to report. You will see an increase in the coming months for finance as we pay our audit fees. That's a big invoice that we pay annually. No other departments are, other than what was noted in the variance report, no other departments are really reporting anything abnormal. Obviously, we've discussed several needs with regards to police building, that kind of thing, and we discussed that in the joint meeting, but with regards to operations and the budget to actual, everything looks like it's going pretty well. Any questions?
This is probably a, I don't know. Where is the money going to come from for the police temporary facilities?
I'll talk about that in my management report.
Thank you.
I'm just curious about the recreation, which is at 81%.
Remaining.
Is that remaining? No.
It should be remaining, yes.
I wish we could have these two consistent.
I know.
Okay, so that's a good place to be.
Yes.
Higher here is better, okay.
And there's some of those revenues, like I said, I mentioned up there, fines and fees, you know, having really kicked in, because a lot of them are recreation-related, so.
Mayor, I move to approve the financial and variance report as amended at the diocesan noted.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any question, any comment, discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we're good.
Thank you. And just as a note, we are coming upon the completion of the audit. I just wanted to make a quick note of that. We have our audit committee scheduled for next Wednesday, I believe, and everything's gone fairly smooth, so.
Very good, thank you. Okay, item 13, town council liaison updates, Economic Development Corporation 4B. Oh, that's, I didn't see.
Stephen's prepared.
Mayor and council, I can give you a brief update. The board met last week and had one major action item, which was the final adoption of the contract with Catalyst Commercial for merchandising analytics and some recruitment assistance in certain areas. And they had, they had essentially formally adopted this contract back in January, but there was some language that they wanted to clean up. We didn't have a meeting in February, and so in March, they ratified the, ratified the agreement with Catalyst Commercial for six months. We also gave them an update on the Alliance Development Forum. That is coming up on Friday, April 5th. It's an invitation only for investment bankers, developers, local businesses, or local business property owners, folks who may be looking to invest in this area. And so far, from what I understand, our CPs have come in. We, we've invited about 50 folks, and we've so far had about 25% respond positively that they're going to attend. And so we're, they're slowly and surely coming in. We'll be sending out a final invitation to everybody this week. So that's coming along. Mike Berry is the keynote speaker, and Dr. Jeremy Stone is the economist that's going to be looking at not just national, state, just very briefly, but it's really going to hone in on DFW and, and how we fit into the DFW market. And we were on a conference call with them last week, I guess, or maybe two weeks ago, and we were talking about the presentation, and I said, you know, what, what would be very interesting is to take our area and try to make a comparison to some of these folks of, maybe we're the, you know, Northouse Tollway 20 years ago, you know? Can, is there another area that folks would be familiar with, and you can say, this is this area 20 years ago or 10 years ago? And he goes, quite frankly, there is no comparison, because there's no area that's between DFW Airport and Alliance. And he said, that alone will set you apart from any other kind of area within a metropolitan city or, or designation, you know, like a metro area. So that, that was just right off the bat, a very interesting statement. This guy's an economist, but he also has specialties in hospitality and retail, so it'll be interesting to see how he kind of pulls everything together. So I've heard he's a very good speaker, so. We're working, we continue to work, especially April. She's doing a great job getting the website in its final stages. We gave the board a sneak peek at what it'll look like and got rave reviews from them. They really liked the look, they really liked the functionality, very complimentary. They just, in just the few minutes that we spent on it, they really had some positive, good, good things to say. Regarding the logo, we have reached out to Byron Nelson, and to date, we have not heard anything back, unless we heard something today regarding where they stand on the project, and we've reached out several times, so we're hoping that we hear something, whether they did it or didn't do it. I know the board will probably be making an, an action item to bring forward a recommendation to you next month, so.
Excellent.
ICSC, we're already starting to plan that for next November. The six cities again, kind of the Alliance Development Forum, kind of brand, we're going to be hosting another space. We took the lead this past year in organizing all the logistics behind it. Northlake is doing that this year, and kind of going to hopefully try to pass it around, so everyone gets a turn. And we're in the process of getting our space reserved, so we get a premium location again this year.
And it's in Dallas again, right?
It's in Dallas, the Dallas Convention Center again, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, I guess I have a question. I don't know if you're the right one, but when are we going to see the website?
Not like we don't ask every day.
I mean, I, I actually have seen it a little bit.
Yes, you have seen it briefly. Officially, next week, I'm going to send it to you all early next week for your review, your comments, and then give you four to five days with it, so that I can take those comments and implement them and figure out how we can make it even better, and then we'll launch it to the public.
One thing I'd just like to point out, because I know, I give April grief every other day about this, but, you know, a lot of people will say, you know, well, I can't just put it, you know, out there quickly. But the importance, one of the most important things on a good website, there's two things. One is navigation, and the other is content. And there is a tremendous amount of content on our website, and a tremendous number of people involved in making sure that all that content is valid, correct, and accessible. And I just point that out, because, you know, I know people wonder, well, why does it take a while? Well, it just does to get all of that content really cleaned up and in good shape. So, thank you for the work, and I'm still waiting, not as patiently as you probably would like, but anxious.
And we, and we know that, you know, when there is a link on that website, if it's not correct, it won't be long before we hear about it.
Right.
So we're trying to make it as, as bulletproof as we can before we roll it out.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was visiting one of our sister cities' websites today to find some information. Starts with an R and ends with an O and O, and couldn't, three links I hit didn't work, and I couldn't find what I wanted, and I ended up just calling them, they said, oh, it's right here, oh, no, it's not. Wait, it's here? No, it's not. So they, they, yeah, they're struggling with their stuff too, so. It's not as easy it sounds sometimes.
No.
I have a question on the records. Will we still be using the same record system, or are we going to have a different record system?
Referring to winocular?
Yes.
Yes. My understanding is we will be using winocular.
Only, only temporarily.
What about those records that keeps saying, aren't there? Will that be corrected?
Well, I know I did a lot of work last week updating EDC 4B records, so it's just a matter of getting that staff liaison on it and, and their attention to it, so we're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like for you to, excuse me?
I was going to say, we're actually, we, part of InCode has a content manager software program that we'll be migrating to, that will hopefully be much easier to use, much more user-friendly, and allow the staff also much greater accessibility and ease of use.
Good, because I, that, that search function is-
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
We certainly want to make it easier for you to find things.
Thank you, I appreciate your concern.
Since you're laughing, since you're laughing and so forth, would you just?
I think we need to remove the search function we got.
We need to make the search function password protected.
April, would you just briefly give us the highlight of the TC Exchange on there?
Sure. TC Exchange is our new online news and information portal, and it's essentially a blog, if you break it down to basics, where if we post a story, let's say, about watering restrictions, and our residents feel like commenting, they have the opportunity to submit comments on that story. So there's two-way communications there, there's not a lot of municipalities doing that. The other option is you can submit an actual article, and there's, we're working on terms of use and guidelines for that. Well, thank you, Patricia. But we're going to allow the community to submit articles. We get a lot of requests to do that anyway, so this is the perfect opportunity to kind of do a little testing in this arena and see how that works out. But I think our community has a lot to say, a lot of valuable information to share, so we're just giving them that opportunity. So it's, it's going to be really neat. I'm excited about TC Exchange. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 14, Mr. Sly.
Thank you, mayor and council, and thank you for allowing me to take some time off last week. It went by way too quick. I am pleased to report that, again, we have received the Comptroller's Gold Leadership Circle Award for transparency. There are significant hurdles that you have to demonstrate to the comptroller, the Texas State Comptroller, in order to get that award. We have gone above and beyond those hurdles in providing more information than what the comptroller requires to our citizens, in, in the vein of trying to be as transparent as we can possibly be. Nothing that we do on a day-to-day basis are we afraid to, to provide for our citizens and community. And in that vein, I am very pleased to say that we have again been awarded the Gold Leadership Circle Award. I wanted to give you a quick update on the Police Department facility and where we're at with that. Getting an insurance claim on the existing facility is like pulling hen's teeth these days, but I do- days, but I do think that this week we will finally get at least a threshold from which they're prepared to pay up to. And once we have that, I'll be much better in tune to provide you the costs for the various options that we are considering. We have honed our options really into getting a temporary facility and locating it on property next to the existing facility. I can tell you that we've had bids for the demolition of that facility. And when you lay it all out, it's north of a hundred grand to clean up that facility, get it taken down and cleaned up. You know, and what I do know is it's not much more expensive to then turn around and put a mobile facility that can be used on a temporary basis. So, you know, given the fact that we know that we're going to take it down in a year or two, it certainly makes sense that what we're, the direction we're headed is the right direction. And I'll have much more finite numbers to present to you hopefully at the next meeting, okay, on the Police Department facility. But again, the Fire Department has been very gracious and I think that they are working, have made the facility at the Fire Department work. It's not the best process, it's not the most efficient, but it is what it is and it's what we've got to work with. And again, Chief Thomas has been very gracious about providing the space and Chief Nick and his crew have been very gracious about understanding that that's the Fire Department's home. There's guys that live there 24/7 and we're encroaching on their environment, so, you know, it's, to date, knock on wood, everything's been fine. I didn't ask them how it was last week when I was gone, but I didn't hear anything, but thanks to them both.
Do we have to wait till the building is demolished before we can put the new one up?
No.
So when can we move forward with getting the temporary facility there?
It's going to require site plan approval by the P&amp;Z and Council. We anticipate putting a site plan in front of the P&amp;Z on the 7th, or I checked it, on the 4th of April, with an action item on April 8th for the Council. The numbers that I have were with an effective date of one April, we're not going to make that. There's no way. You know, we've got to make sure that where we position that thing doesn't encroach on cemetery property or the church property and create drainage problems and we still have to tie it into the infrastructure and the IT infrastructure. It's not going to be a great solution, but it's not intended to be. It's a temporary solution. And like I said the last time I said this, the facility that we're going to end up taking down was a 17-year temporary facility. We don't want that. We need to move out smartly and Stephen and I have been in negotiation with property owners, potential sites for a police facility. And I'll be hopefully better prepared to talk to you about specifics about those options as well, and we'll go to executive session to do that.
Just briefly, when they built that police facility in that location or put up that temporary, there was a public works building on the backside of that parking lot that was there for an extended period of time. Where I'm going with this is I really don't want to put that temporary police station, facility where it would anyway impede the building of that ground storage tank by the mud.
It won't.
Okay, that's, I just don't want it anyway.
Just a layman's question, are we hooking into the same sewer system that caused this problem?
Yes.
Yes, that was the infrastructure, it was a pipe issue.
It was a pipe issue, yeah.
Interior pipe issue, not interior pipe issue.
Yeah.
It was funny though.
Emergency siren installation, the pole is being delivered, I would anticipate our fifth emergency siren be operational by mid-April, weather dependent, and we're trying to get that thing operational before the real severe weather hits. We're probably a couple of weeks delayed, I mean, we're entering that season now and unfortunately, we're not going to be able to have that operational until mid-April. Chief? Parks and Rec update. Boy, there's a lot of things going on. Let me get my notes out.
Page 12.
Let me get my notes out here. Lots of things, Extravaganza, we'll start with that, May, March 23rd, a free event. We've done this thing for several years, it's age appropriate in Indy Park East, it'll start at 9:00 AM. From infants to 10-year-olds are welcome to come out and enjoy the Easter season.
And in case anybody hasn't been there, there are a lot of them and they love it. It is very cool.
We'll have an Easter bunny or three out there, how many?
Evidently, I was, I wanted more than one, but I was told that dilutes the Easter.
There is only one Easter bunny.
I know, I know.
Can't have one Santa Claus, can't have one Easter bunny, wake up, Adam.
I actually did the same thing.
I know you did, that's what I'm telling you.
I just wondered why.
It's also May 23rd, it's also, or March 23rd, sorry, is opening season for our youth baseball, spring season. So that'll happen at 11:30 and the mayor traditionally goes out and opens it up and says a few nice words and throws the first pitch out, but she's unavailable, so I'm her stand-in.
Oh, man.
I've been practicing my knuckleball.
Who's catching you?
Would you like to?
I'll catch you.
Make sure we're capped.
I've been sunburnt once, that will never happen again.
He's actually just putting the ball on the T-ball thing because his throwing is not so good.
Oh, no, I had to throw it on.
So March 23rd is a busy day in Trophy Club. This past weekend, we had the Live Like Josh 3-on-3 Basketball Tournament, which is an inaugural event and it, I think, will really, will encroach, that's exactly right, it will grow into a real legitimate skunk works project. This year, the Parks and Rec Department subsidized that event. I think moving forward, it was such a success and Mayor, you may want to say something, you were there, I was not.
It was, it was amazing, it was a wonderful event, a lot of people very interested, you know, Live Like Josh, you know, of course, the story and his family was there, we got to meet them. But the whole atmosphere was just, you know, so community and I was amazed at the turnout for the first time. I think they had, what did they have, 32 teams?
It looked to be 34.
34 teams. And they were having a ball, everybody was really enjoying it, so it was, and I was very pleased, we had a very good presence also, I mean, Adam was there, Sherry was there, you know, I was there, a lot of our, the fire and EMTs were down there. So I think it really reflected a lot of interaction between the staff, the government, and the community, and it was very positive. And Linda Parker was there as well, the principal, so.
I know one of the reasons we had it at that location was due to the fact that we were dedicating a bench, I think, to Josh or something that was.
Right.
Are we looking in the future, because I think it's a wonderful event, I think it's a great reason to have the event, are we looking in the future to maybe partner with the high school and host it at their location indoors just due to weather? I'd hate for something like that to be rained out or.
They will probably talk about that, they're going to be discussing a number of items, you know, on the future. However, I did hear Thomas, Thomas Poling was the one, because he's the one that originally pushed us to upgrade the courts in the first place, or asked us to. But he said, they, you know, they talked about having it indoors, but it was such a sense, you know, the openness and the outdoors and the community, it was just, and he was talking about trying to bring in some temporary courts that you might put on the parking lot.
Yep.
And perhaps you have a backup, I don't know.
Interesting, temporary courts.
A backup plan of some sort.
Yep.
Anyway, it was a very good event and again, the Parks and Rec Department, you know, stood tall and kudos to the Fire Department. I know you guys that were on call that day were pitched in and helped out of a small little logistics issue that the Parks guys had. They, you know, it's another example of, you know, an organization coming together and it doesn't matter whose job it is.
Right.
If there's something that needs to be done, you know, they're standing 10-deep waiting to get it done. And it's just, you know, it makes for a great organization, it really does. Let me talk a little bit about the Park Board and developments at Indy East. They're meeting tomorrow night and by then, they will have, they will be presented a tree plan for Indy East that will include a sponsorship event with the three major sports, youth sports organizations to provide additional buffering for additional trees in Indy East. That being said, it's going to be very important that we have the connection to the trail before we start planting these trees, right? I mean, we want to, we want to do it and do it right and have the Park Board then consider subsidizing the remaining portion. And we're talking about somewhere in the realm of 23 to 27 additional trees to provide additional buffering for the residents of Lilyfield. Adam and his guys have done a lot of work up to this point, they still have some work, so I can't give you specifics on it yet, but that will be addressed with the Park Board tomorrow and hopefully they'll come forward with a recommendation to Council and a plan to provide additional trees out in Indy East sooner than later.
Meaning this spring as opposed to in the fall? Planning during the spring season before?
Well, again, I'm not going to plant the trees until I have the sidewalk or the trail connection in there.
Is that just because of access?
That's for access.
Equipment access to stay off the main part of the field?
Yep.
Use a 40-foot buffer for the equipment access for the concrete.
Can we, can we get somebody to test or something that, you know, I went down there again this weekend when I was down there, and there's that one section right behind Fitzgerald's that's dead and it's just, it's, I mean, you can see that it's dead and then the trees next to it are so much less.
We can take some soil samples and.
There's got to be a reason. I mean, if you stand back by the, you know, by the building and you look at it, you can see this one section and there's got to be some issue. I mean, it seems wrong that, you know, you'd have all these trees that are growing beautifully and you have this.
I'll visit with Adam and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have one more thing.
I just want to make a comment about that. This is, I think this is a result of one of the best cooperative efforts put together by the residents and by the Parks Board and by the sports associations to have pretty much solved an ongoing problem. And I think all three of those groups, the Parks Board and the Sports Association and the residents along Lilyfield, everyone should be commended for their efforts on that.
And you guys, putting it together.
I'd like to talk briefly on the drainage along that fence line. I went out there, walked it down a couple of times, looked at it, got down, looked at it again. I think five guys, five wheelbarrows and five shovels can solve that problem and I'll be more than happy to take the transit out there and shoot the grade line.
I'll speak to you afterwards. We've had engineers out there with their equipment. I'll speak to you offline.
I do think it's an excellent compromise and I appreciate you taking it to the boards.
Okay. Metropore, we're hosting the Metropore Cities Partnership, MCP, this Thursday. We'll do it at the club because of the lack of meeting facilities that we have. And it's really an opportunity for us, we are the program and it'll be an opportunity for us to kind of share with our sister cities and regional representatives the Trophy Club story, some of which you heard tonight, is, you know, what recession, you know, and how we got to where we're at today. And, you know, we're excited about being able to do that and give them a transportation update on the various projects that are right here in our back door, so. We'll have a lot of elected officials from the area that generally attend Metropore come in and it'll be our turn in the barrel to kind of share the Trophy Club story and any chance we get to do that, we're going to take full advantage of, so. We'll do that Thursday morning. And the last thing I want to tell you is the Ethics Ordinance, you know, you gave us a charge six weeks ago or so to review the Ethics Ordinance and come back to you with amendments. Patricia and I have been working on that, we anticipate bringing back to you in April an amended ordinance for your consideration.
Thank you.
If I may, I have two questions, I'm going to kind of put them on the spot, and I apologize, I probably should have mentioned this earlier, but two questions. One is, I was mentioning to another resident about the gas station going in at Tom Thumb and they were excited and they said, when's it going in? I said, oh, my gosh, I don't remember what we said. Do we remember what dates they were talking about breaking ground and having completion and all that?
No. We haven't had.
He didn't give us dates.
Yeah, I looked around, I just hadn't seen, so I was wondering.
No, all we've done is approve the site plan, I don't think there's been a pre-con.
Okay, there hasn't been anything else, okay. And then my second question, Hampton Inn, I know they had a stretch goal of being ready maybe in December, then it was January, then February, where are they at?
And it was, and then it was mid-March.
Yeah, yeah.
Now it's early April.
They're not going to make race again?
Yeah, I think they will be.
We talked with them today and we've been talking with them for the past couple of weeks about arranging a tour for the Council and for management team. And we talked with them again and I think that may be sometime next week. So we're just trying to get a feel, they're trying to see if they can get everything lined up and if so, then you'll be hearing, we'll be notifying you about a time, we're just going to have to choose a time and date and if you can make it, you can make it, that's great.
I think the Fire Department was over there today.
Yeah, I saw the, what were y'all doing?
Yeah, we did our final fire inspection this morning, so, ready for the CO.
Close.
They passed that, everything's good?
They passed their final fire.
Good.
No sewage issues?
No.
Sorry. How are their beds?
They don't seem to open.
How are their beds?
Nice.
What about their pillows? I judge a place by their pillows.
Well, everything was in plastic today, so it was really hard to tell.
But Jeanette, maybe we need to have a sleepover.
Now, that would be fun.
They do have some nice rooms though, they have some suites.
Item 15. We've had some meetings that might as well have been.
Hampton is.
Very nice facility. We proud.
Mayor, that's all I have.
That's it, okay, thanks. Item 15 is Mayor and Council updates. Feels like it was a lot busier, but evidently, I guess it wasn't.
I can't believe you only did one thing.
We had the chamber luncheon, which, I hardly even remember what the speaker was, I think it was a doctor. He was talking about healthy stuff or something, it was weird, it was just very.
I didn't want to go to that one.
No, it was the basics, it was like something everybody knows. So, anyway, but, at the chamber meeting, they did talk about the bike race, which is May 18th, which they are needing a lot of volunteer support, if anyone's interested. Does anybody know where we stand, whether Barra is going to do the, you know, one year the Council did the rest stop.
Do you know, April?
And one year Barra did it.
No, we haven't discussed that yet.
Okay. Oh, you're working with them on that?
I will.
It's eight weeks out.
Okay, just one check on the thing. They have a golf tournament coming up at the Marriott, I think it's the Marriott. Okay, just, just want to check on the thing. Uh, they have a golf tournament coming up at the Marriott, um, I think it's the Marriott. At a Speedway.
Oh, Speedway, I'm sorry, I saw it last Speedway.
And then the.
No, it isn't.
No.
It's, it's not the Speedway, it's Marriott.
It's a, it's a.
Champion Circle, what?
Marriott, Champion Circle.
Champion Circle. But it's at the, it's right across the Speedway. Okay, and then there's the Women in Business Conference in June, so, um, that's basically, uh, all I have, I think. I thought there was more, but it's, does anyone else have anything they'd like to, that they had, have attended or anything? I am attending a, a crisis management for emergencies class this week. Um, for elected officials class, so. Uh, if anybody happens to be interested in the emergency, uh, classes, if you can go to preparingTexas.org and there are free classes on there. You can take. Um, okay, items for future agendas.
You have, uh, an updated copy on the dais.
Have you asked questions about them? Mr. Schroder.
Schrader.
Schroder, Schroder.
You'll get it right in two years.
Okay, let me ask you about your, uh, youth council.
Yeah, I'm going to apologize. Mayor White emailed me a couple of weeks ago about that and, uh, saying, let's get together and talk about that. And I've had some issues at work that have now been resolved.
That's all right.
So, yeah, Mayor White and I are going to.
You still have a job, don't you?
Yes.
Oh, good. Well, I'm thinking it, consider getting residents engaged in making that happen.
Yeah.
Maybe a school.
Right.
Well, and that's. It, it, it's something that, yeah, definitely, definitely could be a Skunk Force project.
School wasn't very much interested in it.
Well, you talked to Principal Parker about that.
They serve so many communities.
Well, y- yeah, that's an issue. I think that, I think they might be interested. I think we could target, you know, if we could find the right teacher or the right subject teacher, you know, they have business classes and things like that. But I was talking with, um, Principal Parker this weekend, you know, and trying to talk about, you know, trying to do more things. And she was just commenting that they're, right now they're testing has been just killing them because they had the overlap of the two kinds of tests. And it's so, they go through those kinds of things, it's hard to even get to talk to anyone. So.
Mayor, Mayor, can I, can I just add a couple of comments related to the youth council? Uh, the, the municipal league, uh, recognizes youth councils across the state.
Right.
Uh, and, and there are several, uh, communities who have adopted youth councils. And they've tweaked them, uh, to, to meet their own individual communities. Um, you know, I, I'm, I'm honestly encouraged that you, you want to get out there and do that, but I've been talking to Linda Parker and giving Stephen a charge of, of trying to come up with a youth advisory council umbrella, framework from which we can work because there are.
Well, TML has a framework, right?
I understand, but, but what we, what we have that most communities don't is several communities who feed into that high school.
Right.
And, you know, it has to be coordinated between Rowan Oak. I don't know if Fort Worth would even have a, a desire to be part of that. But certainly Trophy Club and Rowan Oak need to be in bed together working on that. And that's what's, and Stephen's got that charge. So if you'll allow us to at least come up with a framework, if there is to be one. You know, if, if Rowan Oak doesn't want to participate or if the high school doesn't want to participate, it's, we're not going to force it.
So probably the best thing for, would be for Clinton, myself to sit down with Stephen?
Yes.
Okay. Can you do that?
And then I have another one, if I may. Number six, I thought that the food prep carts would not work in Trophy Club because we were thinking about doing it at one time out at Trophy Club Park or in that area.
Well, I think.
And, so my question is, why is that still on there?
Um, I think when that was brought up, um, Margie had mentioned, you know, at, at events like, well, for instance, what we're having this Saturday with the egg hunt and the opening day for baseball and stuff like that. Um, I think that's what she was kind of targeting with special events, not necessarily just standing one up at Trophy Club Park and having it there, you know, off and on.
Also, that we're not talking about, um, in this case, in her consideration, we were not talking about, you know, like, um, an ice cream truck.
No, 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 no.
Or a hot dog.
Food truck, yeah.
You know, in Fort Worth, they have that whole park, that food truck park. So it was really something, you know, I know I went to a event, a mayor's event and they had gourmet food. I mean, it was amazing.
Yeah, it's not bad.
So, eh, you know, we thought it would be an interesting.
They're, they're big in Seattle and I go up there all the time and, and I eat them there. They're big in Austin. Um.
But my question is.
The smaller communities, Keller tried to do this.
That's right.
And Keller, Keller zeroed the program because it was competing with their brick and mortar restaurants. The smaller communities like Trophy Club or Keller or Rowan Oak, you know, don't get real anxious about these kind of things because it competes with a few businesses that are, have spent the, the money in brick and mortar to be here.
And they don't, even though they're supposed to pay us sales tax, they don't pay us sales tax.
Well, that's going to be my question is.
Well, there, there is provisions, there's, there's, uh, uh, automation has allowed you to do that.
Yeah, when we talked to them, uh, when I went to this mayor's thing, uh, they said they, their, their point of sale equipment let them identify where they were at when they were selling it and they were paying sales taxes.
The, the reality though, uh, I mean, we have what, what the, what the construction guys call roach coaches running around the neighborhoods, feeding the, the construction guys. They're supposed to be collecting sales tax and remitting that on behalf of Trophy Club as well.
True.
The fact of the matter is they're all registered in Fort Worth and that's where it gets coordinated off to. I mean, that, that's the reality of the situation.
Well, and sometimes when they ha- if they have a location, um, you know, where they prepare the food, sometimes that's where it'll wind up. They, they did talk about that. Some of them have a physical location.
So Jeanette, what you're asking is should we just mark it off?
I'm, I'm at, yes, that's my question. Who's going to do the research and, but my big question too is where would you put food?
Well, there would be in the parking lots of, of Indy East and stuff like that and.
Yeah.
You know, now you're competing with the concessionaires, the concession stand that, that the baseball.
I'm with Jeanette, just take it off.
No, I, I think that when you have a large enough event, your one concession stand does not accommodate.
No, that's, that's true. And like the July fourth event, we do have, uh, you'll remember, we had.
The ice cream guy.
We had the ice cream guy and I told him after last year's issues that if, if we in fact do have several vendors, uh, of, of these kind of guys, we'll set aside par- some of the parking for that very reason. Uh, but I'm not going to let those trucks drive up into Indy East and drive over the irrigation system.
Well, no, not into the grasses, no, be in the parking lots, yeah.
So.
I, I, I see them as being, that's what I want to use, niche. If it's hard to admini- administrate, if it's hard to organize, then maybe it should be strict from considerations.
Well, we don't know that yet.
But we don't know, yeah. I, I guess that's my question, who, so would this be something that Parks and Rec? Okay.
Yes.
Hi, Adam.
We're, we're. We, we got a plate full. Is this an?
I know, I know.
Is that one of those issues that you want us to bring back next week or what?
Well, no, not, no.
But I don't think we need to strike it.
That's, yeah, the question, should we strike it? I think the answer is no, but we know that maybe, may by end of the calendar year.
I can, I can, I can add one thing to that. We have looked at those at Trophy Club Park and we've got core clarification out there. So that's something we're looking at right now. For the bikers and that kind of. Mm-hmm.
That's, okay.
In that instance, that's outside the town limits. I don't know who's going to get that sales tax.
There you go. And all the effort and we get nothing for it. Think about that.
Well, depends on what kind of deal you strike. Depends on what kind of a deal you strike.
Well, wait a minute, if the Parks and Rec department is on it, why is it on our agenda list?
Because we didn't know until this very second that they were on it.
Okay, so why don't we take it off?
These, these issues are not for you to take action on. These are issues for us to bring to you.
Yeah.
And the question is, is it important enough for you to spend your time doing it?
I think it's important. And if there's a lot of things that have been here for a while.
I know.
Well, hell, it's been three years for some of this stuff.
Bill doesn't give up.
Okay, are we good?
Yes. We never have this kind of time to talk about it.
Actually, I do, sorry.
Let's go home.
Just, not to start a discussion, but real quick, number four, the, the sign ordinance. Is there any updates, any plans, any?
Yes, the sign ordinance, eh, you know, eh, I had an email today with, uh, a, a local Realtor in town who eh, eh, would like the council to consider larger real estate signs. As, and, and the comment I made to that individual was, you know, he, he provided all the detail and, and the dimensions and, and the whys and the wherefore's. And I said, we, we've received that input and are in, including it in our analysis of, of a comprehensive sign ordinance. But it's the same department who's done all of the planning and zoning.
Right.
Pl- uh, you know, development, permitting, code enforcement, building inspections. It's the same department that does that.
Right.
And, and I'm not making excuses. It's farmed out to a consultant right now, the sign ordinance. Based on the input that we've provided. Uh, I would hope, as I said, as I told this Realtor today, I would hope that in the next couple of months we'll be able to bring it back for the council's consideration.
Okay.
It, it's, you know, with all of the development and growth that we've had, it's, uh, the reality of the situation is it took a backseat.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, you only have so much time in the, in the day.
I just want to point out, my wife's a Realtor in this town and I can barely get her sign in the SUV she drives now. They don't need to get bigger.
Unless we increase the speed limit to forty-five miles an hour on residential streets, I don't see a reason for a larger sign.
That's for deliberation for you guys when it's presented.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's adjourned at nine oh two.